At six forty, a few minutes late, we'll begin with the dedolations. Meeting's called to order here at six fifty, a few minutes late due to last minute need to move to Eureka Center. We have a quorum and for the first time joining us is Mr. Talbot. John was recently elected as special election to fill a vacancy, so we're happy to have John here. After several years of dedicated service to the community, both in the budget committee and the planning board, John has stepped up to the role of slept board member and we're happy to have him. So your sentence begins today. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Uh, so you'll have an executive session that's not on there.
Alright, yep, we will be adding an executive session pursuant to thirty-six MRS eight four one two. And we will do that at the end.
Okay.
Section four or five, six and a half.
That's, 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 we'll go with that. Alright, perfect. Well, add that, are there any other amendments to the agenda? Um, I would like to move the fire department discussion to ahead of old business to just have that right away. So we can get chief up here pronto, is anyone, is everyone alright with that?
Yeah.
Alright, do I have a motion?
Uh, was there something else you were gonna add? I saw an email, you told someone there, did it already make the agenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna just, in my, in my board member report, make mention of that, so thank you, gentlemen. But do we have a motion to move the fire department to immediately after approval of meeting minutes? So, alright, do I have a second?
A second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any oppositions? Seeing none? I don't see anyone here for public comment. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five as submitted? So, motion by Josh, do I have a second?
Second.
Deb, any discussion? Any questions?
I probably need to abstain.
That's fine. Um, all in favor? Any oppositions? Any abstentions? Abstentions, alright, one's a John, thank you, John. Alright, uh, we're gonna have chief come up right away here.
I'm gonna bring back up John Faith, Deputy EMS for the fire. Always bring backup. Yeah, you got that. I memorized it. Okay.
Alright, chief, you wanna introduce this?
Yeah, I do. So as you know, we have a vacant position at the fire department. So the question before you, so in this, you've read the justification. The question, what you need to discuss is, uh, do we want to move that part-time position to a full-time position? It's been a part-time position for twenty-five, last twenty-five years. I think, uh, of course, I haven't been here, but I understand that, that having requests nearly is to make that full-time. And that the actual person in that position can look up to go. Certainly over twenty-five years in town as well. It's not what used to be twenty-five years ago. So if you have an opportunity now where it's vacant, you discuss whether you want to move that to a full-time. Justifications in front of you. Chief and I have talked about this, you know, probably for an hour or so in my office discussing, you know, is there a need? We both feel that if you're going to go to full-time, if there's, you should be adding service. Are you ready for it? I believe the chief's ready for it because it's very difficult for him all by himself to manage that full department without that kind of help. So what we've added to this position is this position will take care of the, other than the fire department needs, this position will also take on the safety program of town. They'll all take care of public work, safety, the safety of, uh, the town office. So they'll have those added to this. Give you the justification of like what it's gonna cost, depending if you do full-time, eligible benefits. But it's all kinda laid out here, the numbers, you know, they're budgetary. So that's, that's the discussion for you, if you believe the town's ready for this or not. And chief can explain, uh, you know, how he feels about it while he's asking. So that has my, my whole support.
For a while, uh, there was two positions, twenty-eight, twenty-five years ago. It was under a Maricor grant. Uh, the chief thought he needed help back then and there was two positions, right? They both got their EMS license, they were running calls as the town increased in size. You know, the person that left wasn't advanced, we're looking at just an EMT. The paperwork is thirty, forty hours a week for, for running the rescue, really, it's the EMS job. So it's the safety for the town, it's the rescue. Every member for us, forty-two of them, has four different files that all have to be up, you know, up to date at any minute. So CPR to driver's license to insurance cards to, um, you know, current valid medical card, just all respiratory, mandatory, that type of stuff. Perfect example today, I, I had to use a vacation day and we had a per diem. I had to make six phone calls to make sure I had a driver in town that could respond. And of course, we've already had several calls. Every time I'm out or training, vacation sick, I have to make sure there's someone to cover or I just don't take it, really. So this would be also in addition to the per diems that we already have, sort of that one person. This would be a Monday through Friday, eight to four, you know, a full-time position. EMS if we get a call, driver if we get a call, depends on what the, the candidates are. We've already had several express interest, people that can drive fire trucks, just all of it. Friday, I'm alone. So we have three volunteer sort of ambulance drivers in town, all north of seventy and two of them are north of seventy-four. So, you know, there are doctor's appointments, they have lives, some people still work. So I don't have a per diem on Friday, I'm just hoping that there's a driver in the area during the day that can take me. If there's not, we can go mutually, but the problem with that is the, the town loses revenue. So if there's a transport, it's up to a thousand dollars the town loses because we just can't do it ourselves. So the last great front for the fire department is staffing. So, so the fire side of things, we're doing well. I, I mean, it's a great core of, of men and women. The ambulance is, is just getting more difficult. And if you can imagine at any age, you're trying to drive an ambulance to one of the five hospitals. We also just ran into Central Maine Medical Center, it's downgrading their, their trauma. So we're going to Maine Metmore. So, you know, why can't the fire chief drive? Sure he can, but he's gonna be gone two hours, every call, every day, that type of stuff. So, um, it just puts me behind. Not including, you know, I think I'm carrying about eighty-eight hours in vacation, just that can't use. Budgetarily, with the savings in the hourly, we can go forward to July. Uh, the question is the, the benefits, right? So whether that person takes no insurance, a single plane and a family, I, I don't know that. Uh, I think we can cover it. In that category, I'm about five percent underspent of where we are in the budget, so I, I think we can do that. And again, that's saving on the last position. What am I missing, Debbie?
Just additionally, I know Diana carried a lot of additional experience duties where she was helping on like grant writing, ordering, completion of the grants and ordering those subject items. The day in, day out, ordering up supplies in the house, paying the bills, that sort of stuff. When, when you're like meshing in between. To make sure I got that.
Yes, I mean, these are just every day, right? So yesterday, I think we went over, you might have seen social media, we went over Apollo to help them on reported structured fire. That was everybody, but, you know, having an EMS person, at least we could still staff the rescue. Yesterday, we took everybody, Durham was without a rescue for an hour or two. You know, because of mutual aid and these things happen, but if we had designated EMS person Monday to Friday, and predominantly, that's when seventy percent of our calls are, Monday to Friday, eight to four, that type of stuff. People cruising through, the population increases, schools in session, that type of stuff. At night, you know, people come home, I have drivers signed up. There's not an issue having a driver for the per diem at night or weekends. The corps is just dedicated to that. But, you know, Monday through Friday, I think everybody leaves town, right? So, um, having a driver, having a second EMS, when those per diems, we're running about ninety percent fill rate for per diems. So when they don't take a spot, that full-time position would be, you know, the, the EMS person. So there's still other, you know, statistics with it. Any questions? I'm, I'm sure there's budgets and numbers and questions.
Yeah, anyone have any questions for chief?
I do.
Durham.
I was doing some stack boom math.
Your words.
Uh, that's sort of a prodigy. You said, when you did the table for angle of course scenarios, you subtracted out the, I think, thirty thousand, give or take.
Yes.
At the prior, did that person take medical?
No.
Okay.
No, they weren't about the medical.
Straight up hourly.
Okay.
But they were maxed out, right? So they were maxed out at like twenty-eight dollars an hour, I mean, it took them twenty-five years to get there, but they were at twenty-eight. This position would be twenty-two. So, there's a little savings for the next six months of, of our budget type of stuff. Moving ahead, twenty-two times the two thousand eighty, I think that's forty-five. And then, again, now benefits.
One, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, John, that's fine.
I was just gonna say, if, of course, the budget gets approved by the town come June.
Sure.
Is there, if it doesn't get approved, if they subtract whatever amount of money out, is, would that person under, how would you handle that, I guess? I know that's an if, a mighty if, and I'm not saying it would, but.
I would, we'd have to get creative. I'd have to talk to command staff and town manager about cutting the per diem sort of hours possibly. But having someone dedicated Monday through Friday in that role, you know, for Durham, is the most appropriate for funding. Uh, I, I don't suggest cutting or, or anything. And I understand the people's will and voting if you, if you wanna bring it up. But we would have to do a per diem cut.
If you could ask one more. Being the new guy, how many people do you have that are, for lack of a better word, salaried? Is it, did you, it would be this position?
That, so, correct, that's it. So I'm salaried, at, at the chief's pay, and the other one that we lost was a part-time. Always been part-time, no benefits, hourly wage.
Hourly rate?
Yeah, hourly, yeah, so no, nothing else.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah, so when you talk about staffing, it, it's really, it's covering the ambulance, it, it really is. Uh, I'm not worried about fire trucks and whatnot, we'll, we'll get them there. But this is about the ambulance. Durham runs the rescue, they do a fantastic job at it. And recently, I think it was twenty, nineteen, twenty, we had an enterprise account. I think, I think the town voted to sort of take that revenue away and put it into the general fund every year. But that's a six-figure cap. So the ambulance produces, I think last year, a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and twenty, somewhere in there, uh, revenue to the town. Uh, that isn't, I, I mean, it's up to the budget, you all and the townspeople, how they wanna use that funding. Uh, I'm asking for roughly fifteen to thirty thousand of that ambulance revenue to come back to us, just to staff it. Sort of investment in, in the business.
Rebecca, any questions?
Yeah, so chief, um, so the part-timer was EMT and an admin.
Yes.
So because you're looking for a full-time position, is that going to be hard to staff because it's admin work as well?
I've already had interest of internal candidates.
Okay.
Basic EMT, I, I, I mean, here's my opinion, seriously. The town should hire paramedic firefighters, they really should, bang for the buck, right? We just don't have that type of funding, we're, we're just not there yet. Uh, this would be an EMT basic, so that's why it's less money. And admin, so, at, at the discretion of the fire chief. And just know, I've looked up this job, there's four other communities around us, all with the same position open. From Phipps, Phippsburg, I think Turner had one, they all have the same position open. Uh, EMT, staffing during the day and admin.
How long have those positions been open to you now?
They usually only go on MMA website, you can just, you know, under jobs, under fire, they'll come right up. It's, they're usually open for thirty days, but I do not know how long they've been.
But you're saying that there is internal interest, so most likely it will be filled pretty quickly.
It, it really, that goes to Durham. Good equipment, good culture, appreciated by the town. Call volume's still four hundred or so. It's not inner city, but, you know, there's calls.
Yep.
You know, and too, not large, but, um, complex calls just today.
What's the breakdown in EMS versus fire calls?
So nationally and in the state, it's like sixty-eight percent is EMS. And last year, we were at like seventy-two for Durham. So that includes car wrecks, but seventy-two percent of what Durham Fire does is medically related. So whether that's a lift and assist, whether that's a transport, a car wreck, it's, it's mapped, seventy-two percent.
EMT goes to pretty much every structured fire.
EMT, if, if they weren't a fireman, if EMT say admin, they would still roll the rescue to a structured fire and they would staff rehab, they could change bottles, and if a firefighter's been injured, they can transport.
Josh, do you have any questions?
I, I mean, I was hesitant question, I, I really wanted to question the, the cost. But I think you sold it to me, something you said, and you shook, you were shaking your head. Uh, it, it was really the safety of the community. Uh, I think that really hit home to me. I think, I think that justifies the, the, the extra cost. Uh, the, my, my concern is how do we pay for it between now and July? I think going forward, uh, you know, I think all of the hundred and fifty or so people that show up at town meeting are gonna understand the importance of having somebody there, right? I mean, it's, uh, more and more, we're seeing the, the accidents. The, the other, the other calls, people are talking about it. And to have someone there, frankly, to give you some rest. Because, you know, Jerry's told us multiple times that, you know, you're working, you're working a lot, you're, you're busy, you need help. To keep you around, to help the rest of us and the people who, who've come through this town. You know, you, you sold me on it, I think, I think, I, I think the town has an obligation to help the citizens. And, you know, other than, you know, sort of plowing the road so it's, you know, safe passage, I'm not sure how else we can really staff and show people that we, we care about them to be safe other than filling this position because, uh, you know, you're talking about Friday and, you know, what, what happens if? And that's a scary thought, what if it's, what if it's me and my family or something like that? And, you know, that's selfish, but it's also, you know, somebody else, and it could happen.
I, I worry about the same, Josh.
I know you do, I know you do, which is why we all appreciate it.
I appreciate it. So let me give you some statistics, basic statistics that are in my brain right now. Social media, I can't explain to the townspeople. We've had three fatal motor vehicle accidents in Durham this year. We've had three suicides by guns in Durham this year. We've had multiple structured fires in Durham this year. Sure, it's not the numbers of Lewis and Auburn, but it's the same. And usually with two people.
Yep.
And it affects you, even, even the small, small things.
Of course it does.
Uh, and, and so, uh, you know, like I said, I, I was hesitant when we walked in, but that really, really sold it to me and I think it's important, I think it's something that we ought to support and the town ought to support. And, um, you know, I think I said it during the last budget cycle, you know, we are pretty tight, uh, we don't have a lot of extra money to move around. But I think this, if there's anything left, this is a good reason to use it and the best way we can use it to keep, uh, keep our citizens and the people who travel through this town safe. So I, I appreciate you looking out for everybody and doing this. So I, I am, I was hesitant to go on this board, but now full, full steam ahead. I think it's a great idea, uh, I think we ought to support it and get this going as quick as possible.
Deb, do you have any questions?
Okay. Yeah, I wanna speak to the fiscal responsibility and that sort of thing. As you know, when I first got here and looked at the Durham's budget and its process, and I think Joshua remembered this, there's no contingency line, even though we said you, a contingency line of each department's budget is as fundamental as the sun rising in the east and setting in the west. And yet, we get pushed back every year for a contingency line. So not knowing what's going to happen throughout the year, like this situation we have here, when we may have to provide health insurance or something, well, where do we get it? So this is a perfect example of a contingency you hope you don't have to use it. But it's better to have it and need it, than to need it and not have it. So I just say that going forward as being fiscally responsible for the town, that you might wanna consider that in your, in your budget.
Deb, did you have any questions for chief?
Um, where did we say the revenue from the, what we make off the ambulance trips goes now? Where does that go now?
It just goes to.
Just go back into your bucket?
No. No, undisputed.
Just in general, okay.
So it's a, it's a revenue, right?
It's, it's just a revenue at all.
Revenue that pulls off together, right?
Yeah, it, it used to be earmarked in its own separate, like this was generated by the fire department. But then it got re-changed, it just, it all goes into there. But we know that when we look at our revenue annually, you know, a hundred and seventy or?
One twenty roughly, but.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars is the revenue from that, because we adjusted the billing structure on, particularly on EMS calls, uh, two years ago, I believe.
Probably.
You know. Do you have other questions, huh?
No, I, I just make a comment, I feel I got the favor of this too. It serves the organization as well. Analyst staff.
Just, it doesn't go into the reserves. It go, because we build a budget based upon a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or so. So it goes into a revenue account.
Yep.
And then it just get, then when we, then it gets all put into like the general fund, then we start the budget costs.
It's like dog licenses and everything.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, we lumped that a few years back, just to, and our revenue is revenue.
So, does not go in the fire department, does not get any line in the fire department.
Right, right.
Anything we need, most of you, budget and the townspeople. So they can still vote on, but it is reinvesting in the, in the business.
So worst-case scenario, if a person steps the job requiring full insurance, we're an upper of, what, thirty thousand?
Well, it's twenty-seven thousand a year, so we get six months of that.
Oh, I tell you.
Half, it would be half of that.
Yeah, so if you look at this table here, the health insurance column is what the cost would be for which health insurance they take.
Right.
And then the total annual cost would be the full annual salary plus that health insurance line.
Going forward, seven months worth.
The, the, this would be about, I mean, an eight thousand dollar increase at the minimum.
To pay.
Right, up to about twenty-two thousand.
Yep.
And so, when I heard you say chief was like right now, at about ninety percent fill rate for that per diem, and so there's about ten percent that you budgeted for, for that per diem that you're usually not using?
Correct.
Yeah, so that probably can build some liquidity. I'm also guessing that since the position's been open for a while and then the amount of hours the previous person was actually working versus what they would budget for, you've got a little liquidity in there too.
We did, there will be liquidity. We did have to pay out close to forty hours of earned time leave or paid time off type of stuff, uh, upon separation. So there was that, so that's almost two weeks' pay.
Yeah.
But yes, going forward, I'm looking to, uh, eventually, uh, post it, interviews and, and maybe bring up more, my best hope is January first. So six months of, of half pay, really, and benefits.
Yeah.
And I think the fire department can absorb it.
Okay, so you're thinking that if this gets filled January one, based off of the other, like how much you're under budget on the other staff lines, that you, depending on what they take for coverage, you might be able to cover that till June.
Yep. Yep.
Please wait.
We can certainly cover the wages.
What's that?
Oh yeah, wages, yeah, wages can be certain number.
Can you swing it until a Jan- January first hire? I mean, that's a month and a half away, that's quite a while. But I mean, that's pretty long.
Oh, honestly, to answer that, uh, upon separation of, of the part-timer, because we're a family across the street, ten people came up to me and said, what can I do? What, what role can I fill, how can I help you, from milc sign and on down? So, um, if it's sooner, you know, better for all of us in the town. If not, uh, those people will continue to step up.
And being an equal opportunity employer, so remember we're an employer, right? So we gotta post the job, you gotta give everybody an equal chance to get the job, to be interviewed. You know, document all this, because if we don't, we could face trouble. So we figure a two-week posting time, you know, maybe a two-week interview time. That person has to give two weeks' notice if they're coming from someplace else. So you're looking at six weeks' pay, like.
Pretty rapid, sir.
Or it could be, so we'll do it as soon as we can, but we, we definitely have to follow the labor laws on our area of the staff.
Sure. So proposed forty hours at twenty-two dollars an hour. That, your target is someone who's a basic EMT with admin experience. Is that the top, top dollar price there? Like if someone is paramedic firefighter and they say, I want this job, but I can't do it for that, is it, sorry, this is what it offers?
I don't think we can afford it.
Yeah, okay.
So it's not a competitive wage?
It's competitive for an EMT basic. A higher license, uh, not, right? What, what average is twenty to thirty-something for a paramedic?
Could, could you explain the difference in EMT basic, advance and paramedic?
So Maine has three levels of EMS basic. I think that it's six months, you know, couple hundred hours. You can get your advance, that's another, you know, couple months of training. Uh, in advance can do IV therapy, some EKG stuff. And then a paramedic, depending on what program you go to, that, that's up to two years as an associate's degree. Currently, we're looking, the competitive twenty-two, so we're paying, you know, a fire EMT twenty currently across the street. So this would be twenty-two, full-time benefits. In the area, low but competitive. It's not firefighter, EMT wages, you know, that's a, that's a different union, full-time, that type of stuff. But an EMT license basic with some admin, twenty-two. You know, I, I think you could still go to target for twenty. And, and just know this, this is the truth. Come July, I was gonna ask for drivers during the day for the very same reason, and I was gonna ask for a pumping. And I was gonna ask for a pumping pay for everyone and a a large increase in pay. Ju- just because we're we're a third service, so everybody's full time job, you know, takes precedence and then. All these guys have three jobs, three per diem jobs, so they'll go to the next highest because time is precious and then they'll fit us into the schedule. It's just what happens again, good people, good clients with Durham, good equipment and a good culture with low pay. But we'll we'll train you, you know, we'll send you to school, we have a larger training budget. You know, a mentorship type of stuff, if you're not full time, we can help you get a get a full time job and we've done that. Uh all the way from John, I mean, there's dozens of people that have gone through our program.
Do you do you see benefits here, Chief, in the sense that if you have a forty hour admin, maybe build a little more capacity for down grants and opportunities like that?
Yeah, a- as you know, grants, i- it's not about how many you can write, it's about writing them. You know, the first time correct and 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 putting those hours in. And that's really just high consumer, e- even the ones MMA, you know, the home runs one, you know, that we use in the volunteer fire. A wildland ones, that those are hours and hours of of research and documentation and then follow up, so the town gets their money if they're matching grants. That's also hours of paperwork and follow up, so um it's just not enough time a day for for one person.
The other thing I wanna note here is when I read this proposal. It means in my mind that Monday through Friday, eight through four, there's three people sitting over there. You doing your chief work, this person working on admin stuff and then a per diem. So when EMS call comes in, they're they're rolling the vehicle out the door in seconds as opposed to now either.
Yep.
Waiting for a driver or getting you, and when I look at our responsibilities board, I think that our number one. Priority in Durham, and I've said this at the time meeting and stuff like that, is uh to limit risk and then manage our finances responsibly. And for me, this checks off both of those boxes, it's limiting risk. And it's creating opportunities to potentially give Chief some breathing room to do work more at top of license rather than having to be at every single call. And so anything that comes across our agenda, those are my questions, does this limit risk? Does this manage our resources in a fiscally responsible way? To me, this is yes. So I'm for it. I think that you've got some opportunities here to carry that expense based off the ninety percent fill rate for EMS and then the. Money that's generated from having it vacant for a little bit of time. Coupled with a five dollar and change, or almost six dollar decrease in hourly wage. And a couple times you've mentioned good culture and I think that good culture can't be taken for granted, it has to be maintained. And that this something like this helps maintain that good culture of. We might not have the highest wage, but we have a really good team and we have a really good space for people to work. And we can get a long way on good culture if we still maintain it, and I think that this goes a lot towards that, so um. That's that's all I have to say about it, and if anyone else doesn't have any questions for Chief, um I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
Make a motion that we approve the re- the request to change the stop shop description, make a little time decision.
Do you have a second? Alright, so any additional discussions or questions on the motion? Just for clarification, if we give you approval tonight, this job will be posted probably sometime next week and then. Couple week turnaround on application window and then that sort of stuff.
Yep, I'm getting it with the town manager, human resource, we know who we're contracted with, uh making sure that we're. Checking all the boxes with all of it, but yes, we will be going forward in a quick pace.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Any opposition? Seeing none? Thank you for your time tonight, I know you have a lot of other stuff on your mind right now, so we're gonna feel free to dive.
Thanks for the interview.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Devin, as well, thank you.
Give your team our regard.
Yes, please.
I will, I will, thank you. I will, I had my uniform on too, but then now all you get is Vinyabine, so.
And a lot of people from Massachusetts were Vinyabine.
Whoa, easy, who said that? Don't let's on camera. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chief. Um so we'll go back to old business here.
Okay.
Cash in lieu of health insurance uh discussion. So. Uh Ed, I'll just give a brief reminder for everyone here and also for you, John, I think you might have seen some of these discussions.
I've watched all the movies.
Yep, yeah, um I think some of those movies are Oscar worthy, yes, maybe uh.
The Terminator.
But uh yeah, so Jerry, we had a presentation here, we had asked you to bring us some numbers of what the fiscal note would look like.
Yep.
If we had changed to from a baseline twelve hundred to a percentage value based off of the self insurer rate. And so I think you have some scenarios pulled up for us.
Right. Yeah, so you've asked me to put um some scenarios together for you, um and some data, so this is what you're looking at. Now, the the tool here, one's for twenty five, one's for twenty six, okay, so. Well, all of both of them, they're just different numbers, but it's really the same thing, so currently the twenty twenty five. And I'm and I'll just go right over this so you understand. So right now, currently in the in the town for single coverage, we have five people, five employees taking it. Zero and zero with employee spouse and employee children, nobody taking that and two people that take family, okay? The dental, same idea, single, we got three people taking it. An employee spouse takes, uh we have one that's taking dental. Zero employee children and two people with family dental, okay? So currently, and then we have four people that that don't take insurance, so there's cash in lieu, they get twelve hundred. So that equals that one twenty seven sixty six sixty eight, that's what we're currently paying right now. So. A scenario is down below, you've asked, well, what if we bid twenty percent, thirty percent, forty percent uh instead of the twelve hundred? So that projected ER cost, that that's under twenty percent, that's what a single employee would get at twenty percent in cash. That's twenty percent of the single coverage.
Could I just, would you just tell me what ER is?
It's the employer rate, okay? So the so that co- the cost over there is nine thousand, so if you add those two numbers up, it comes to that twelve thousand three hundred two, which is all the coverages. Okay, so if you decide to go thirty percent, that thirty seven fifteen would be what the employee E would get. And the cost would be fourteen thousand and sixty, okay? So that's that's how you sort of read that on down through, alright? So the budget impact to the employer, the employer at twenty percent currently, if uh you did that, it would be five thousand one oh four. You see that down below?
Increase of across all staff?
Yep. Okay?
Yeah.
So if you flip to the next page, cuz there was a question about, well, what if people jumped off, you know, and uh. Did cash include, that would actually be a savings to the town, so these costs on the second page are all savings. That the town would s- you would see if the if people went off the single coverage and switched to cash in. Okay, so like for me, if I get off single coverage, took cash in lieu, you'd save nine thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, twenty percent.
Alright, does everyone follow what Jerry's saying there?
Okay, so that's current. This is probably a better one, it's the same numbers to quote of twenty twenty six, so this is the budget that we're going to be facing. So we just got noticed that health insurance is one nine percent and dental is going up five percent. So these are the costs with those reflected increases. This is, so currently, if you do nothing else. You don't increase anything, your cost for health insurance and dental is going from one twenty seven to one sixty four. So I just provide, I just got this today at work, I'm marked with it. Cuz we just found the percentage increases the other one right now. So if you decided to go twenty percent. The employee would get two thousand six ninety nine, the employer cost would now that would be ten thousand seven hundred and sixty.
And that'd be a.
At a twenty percent.
Five thousand nine hundred and ninety six differential. This uh this increased ER cost at twenty percent, that would be a total five thousand nine hundred and ninety six dollar increase for us at the current number of people.
Right, that's those two numbers added together is what the single cost you. Is that what you're asking?
Well, so at at the bottom here, you have increased ER costs at twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent.
Yep.
That five thousand nine hundred and ninety six, is that the increased cost total across all employees or just per employee?
That's the employer cost at twenty percent.
For all of the employees that are currently taking the.
Right now. And that jumps up at thirty percent, the single coverage.
Yeah. Do we have any questions for Jerry?
This is good work, and this is for me to respect and to understand, uh so let's just go back, so right now.
Yeah.
If the town employee does not choose health insurance, they get a twelve hundred dollar stipend.
Yep, twelve hundred each year, hundred bucks.
Okay, and okay, so.
Which is roughly ten percent of the current insurance.
And so the reason why we're addressing this issue is because we want to retain employee, it's a retention thing and. Can we just summarize?
Yep, so the reason why I'm looking at this is because your competitors, other towns offer much more cash in lieu of insurance. And the employee handbook is opened up right now, cuz we're gonna be doing it, so it just, I'm giving you the information and sharing with. What the human resources person looks at, all these other towns and said, you know, your cash in lieu was really low, if you wanna be more competitive, you ought to raise that. Doesn't mean you have to. But it's just information for the board to understand where they're at as compared to other uh municipalities. And I shared with you a lot of work that went into a spreadsheet that showed like a whole bunch of other towns there.
Yeah.
Yeah, to me, remember, with other towns.
Um I don't.
Well, they did all over the place.
It was all over the place, but we were uh in the in the bottom. Third of what most towns in the general area were offering. Um sometimes we're offering thirty plus percent of that single coverage rate. I know one, oh sorry, go ahead.
I wish we knew beforehand, like if there would be any current employees who would jump off the the plan to go to the cash.
Well.
To show us, you know, we know how much that savings would make me take.
That's a.
Well, well, I I'll tell you what I did. I asked my wife, I said, what do you get for cash in lieu if your husband or partner doesn't take it? She says, we get fifty percent. And I said to her, I said, oh, well, you should jump on my insurance, take that fifty percent and we'll be four hundred dollars a month ahead. She said, no, I like my insurance, I'm not going on your insurance, so she gets to come to the area of the park where you was. So I I stopped that, I said, okay, but we'll lose another four hundred if we do that.
But it does drive a conversation between.
Absolutely.
Between partners.
You you bring up a good point then, cuz like in my mind, there's like.
Absolutely.
If you're thinking about this not as from a personnel standpoint and making sure people have the benefits and what, if you're saying it from a money standpoint. The highest you can go, if 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 you offered, let's say, forty percent, and you know that's an incentive buys half the town to go take cash in lieu. Once until you get to fifty percent, it's a at fifty percent offering, it's a break even offer for us. At forty percent, if one person leaves. In self insure, who goes, self insure, we save a lot of money because we are now retaining sixty percent. As opposed to paying the full thirteen thousand four ninety six, so like there is that element, I don't know if twenty percent makes that change for anybody. But it is something to think about. Joshua, Rebecca, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just trying to try, I don't think I'm gonna try good.
John, any questions from there?
No, I'm waiting for Jerry to finish up.
No, I'm I'm.
Oh, okay.
Here, hold on, I'm pretty finished, yeah, unless you have some clarification, uh questions on, you have a little bit.
So Pete, the average of the state is forty two percent average, is that. I worry the thing. Does they cover?
Just for me, our tenants. So.
This spreadsheet is crazy.
It's a lot of work, it's uh.
That was a, was that MMA who pulled that together?
No, that was a town you're gonna get a funding.
Oh, yeah? Let me see.
Oh wait, no, that's not it.
Um. Did you, when did you send that to us real quick? Hold on. Oh, there we are.
Do you mind that? If we made the change like this, when would it go into effect?
July one twenty twenty six, yeah.
So after the time, is something that we discussed in the time period?
No, it'll just be part of the, it'll just be part of the budget.
You know, just policy on your budget.
It'll be, it'll be embedded in the article of like the general government. Fire department's mind, it'll all be part of that.
So those lines are going up anyway, those lines are going up because these healthcare costs are going up.
Exactly.
True.
I mean, the healthcare, dental, that's going up twenty seven thousand. Two fifty.
So this doesn't. Well, I only asked the first question. Is there any numbers out there that say ten percent, when if you if you raise it to something, twenty percent, thirty percent? Ten percent more people will opt for the money, you know, take it in lieu of, is there any kind of feeling? So if we don't know that, this actually costs us, it doesn't save us anything on healthcare. Or it's not missing something.
I mean, that's 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 my issue with it too, is it it could, but I mean, we have an issue now where uh some of our employees are county employees. And they get a different insurance than the state employees get, and so they need. What what their medical needs are covered by state insurance, but not the county insurance. Uh so you know, where it used to be, I think that the public insurance was better than everything else is always true, so I don't think there's. I mean.
No, it it's like it's just a risk that you take, right, that's really all it is.
Right, yeah.
It's also about retention, in keeping the people who are great here and there's a lot of. Other towns who like some of the people who are here and we need to at least show that we are, we care and which we do. It's important.
But with this, we're only showing four people that we care.
Right.
Yes, but those are, those are full, yeah, those are.
I mean, to be honest, you. And I think they're not important, but.
Yeah, but those are full time positions that it's, we don't, it's going to be more expensive if we lose them than this.
Haven't we given people their birthdays off now?
No, it's a personal.
You know.
It's more than. I I worked on my birthday and no one ever thought to give it. I mean.
It's wise of course.
I I mean, I don't, I don't get a personal gift, I I work before I take a vacation.
You don't get a personal ticket too?
So I I think what you're saying just is that we did extend a benefit.
Yeah.
To the employees. To me, I'm struggling a bit where, you know, I'd like to have a model, like we're not raising taxes. And that's hard to do when we're voting, when we have an option to, you know, keep the. On a certain topic, we have an option to not raise any additional tax revenue. I mean, we can't help it with insurance costs going up, but this is an optional thing.
For for me, if we're going to help with retention, it's something that should help everybody. And I don't think that this does it. I don't think it's gonna give, I think, I mean, you go to twenty percent and it's an extra six thousand dollars next year. I mean, to me, that's it's not a huge, but I don't think that that extra. What what that will be an extra fifteen, fourteen ninety nine? How much of an incentive is that really gonna be? Are there better ways to do it? And and so that's why I I still think. Uh if you ask me right now, I'm I'm not as supportive as, I think if we really wanna work on retention. We come up with a a way and that's gonna help everybody, this helps four people, I mean, it's gonna change anything else, it's just gonna um. I think we need to come up with something better, what that is, I don't know, but.
Yeah, I do think one thing that we need to be a little careful of is when we think about retaining employees. When we're in an organization this size and we have a just a handful of employees. We start thinking, well, we know these four people aren't gonna do this, or we know they're gonna do that. Um and also when it comes to. Um, and also when it comes to employee benefits, not every, when you offer a slew of benefits, not every benefit is gonna be applicable to every employee, but by offering a slew of benefits, you have the increased net of offering a benefit that may work for one person, so a perfect example is, um, you know, your men, your total compensation increases if you have a family claim, because now the town is paying far more money towards your salary and your insurance on your behalf. And so, you know, some people could argue, offering family insurance doesn't benefit me because I'm not gonna take it, so there's the flip side of that too, so I do think we wanna think about the totality, and what really sparked this conversation um was hiring the HR to to look at how our employee handbook is existing in the sphere of uh other employee handbooks in the community, in the immediate community, and so I do wanna just keep that as a frame of reference as we think about this a little bit. Um, that it's not just about this exact scenario right now, but about, you know, continue continuing to contribute to that culture we have in Durham of retention and making it a desirable place to work, I'm not saying that that's pushing the in favor for against, but I just think that's an important component to think about right now.
Well, I think this is a piece, that you know, it's a piece, but we've been, you, we've been, you know, proving birthdays be a birthday, that's now an extra day off.
Mm-hmm.
And so, not everybody get, as Josh said, not every, so we've been, you've been, we've been providing more benefits, and I guess we've been doing it kind of piece meal.
Yeah.
And I guess, and I think Josh may have mentioned a couple meetings ago, would be good, some point in time, you catch your breath, sit down and say, what is the right benefit package to have, I don't think, right now, I don't think this is part of it, and I appreciate the work Jerry, you know, did at our request, but I I just not sure I can support this.
Yeah, and we don't have to have a vote on this tonight, I think this is just, part of this is reviewing that employee handbook, is let's go through all these different recommendations and take into consideration what they are, and then some of them, we might be an easy yes, you know, the personal day wasn't a big a big lift for us to approve. Some of these might be, we need to think about this and look at some other fiscal situations before we make a decision, so I I don't think we need to vote on this tonight. I think we can digest this information a little bit and uh think about other a- aspects of the budget cycle moving forward, you know.
I I I think the extra personal day off is easy to pay because of the budget impact.
Right.
But this is an impact on your fellow employees who have to pick up the slack.
And I and I want. But, but I get sick, I think vacation is on, an an extra day out of the whole years, but it's it's.
Yeah. And I, well, I also think what's important with that personal day is that the general holiday schedule recognizes holidays that aren't often celebrated by everyone, and so some people might feel the need to celebrate different holidays or have different reasons, whether it's a day memorial, it's important to them or something like that, so that gives a little bit of flexibility, kind of like a floating holiday, you know.
Yeah, and um one other point that I wanted you all to consider and think about is when you talk about the taxes and the increments, the municipal budget hasn't raised those taxes like last year, you know, it's a freedom.
Yeah.
The municipal government did not raise the taxes, it's more deficit tax, not this year.
Yeah, okay.
In account.
The the other thing I'm kind of wondering here too is, we have new information that we just got today. Sounds like health insurance premiums are going up nine percent, is that cost split evenly between the employer and the employee, or is that nine percent for both the employer and the local employee?
That's nine percent of the insurance cost you pay the employee twenty.
Yeah, and so, that's one thing to think about too, is that if if there were to be an increased cash in lieu, you're now looking at, well, there's decreased cash in lieu, and if I don't take it, I'm also getting an increase in in my premium right now because premiums have gone up. So there's some economics that might be done in the household there, um, just just thinking about it out loud, kind of.
But understanding that.
They're they're going up.
Understanding.
Yeah, I have to look up the answer here, sorry.
Yeah.
Understanding that the two of you are busy, but I would like to see if we're gonna have a real conversation, in in my, if what I would like to see is some type of internal survey, where you say, where you ask, you know, are you thinking of leaving, why, what 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 changes would help address the issue, something like that, so we know, and.
I I I don't think that's appropriate.
I I don't think that's appropriate at all.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
That's, I think that puts a lot of pressure on people, feel like their glories, they're clamping down on, I I wouldn't be surprised if that was legal.
Yeah.
We'd have to check financing. I.
So the point, the point of the question is, is is again, what I would like to see, not that we should do it, but what I would like to see is to get what people would actually look for to help better the retention, is it this, is it a dollar more an hour, is it, you know, give me some flex time, do this, what what is it? Or is it, you know, I'm happy the way it is, you know, that, because to to me, this is this wouldn't change my opinion if I worked for the town group. Yeah, I'm not sure it's illegal, it's I, if it was like.
It's 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 not illegal, but.
No, asking, asking what, ha- asking how to better my work environment, that's fine, that's a fine question to ask.
But but asking, would you get rid of insurance if we increased this, I don't know, so, I don't know if that's a law, yeah.
No, you cannot ask that, no, you cannot ask that, I think, what what do you want to see, if anything, in this position?
Yeah, I think like Josh's reference, so like employee retention survey, like, you know, where do we, where where do we sit on these things?
Like, whatever that, yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's fine.
But I think if we were to say, if we increase this to ten percent, would you leave, or twenty percent, would you get rid, like, that fits a little bit too.
I I think because we're so small, and if they pay attention to this video, and I ask them, they'll say, what's gonna be me say is, I want more cash in lieu of health insurance, how's that? Right, I mean, it's not a big organization where you can do like this survey where, you know, they don't know what's coming, I mean, I mean, you have one employee right here that already pays twelve hundred, so if I ask her, she may say, well, I would like more of it, so it's.
So, I mean, the other thing too, what I'm seeing here is, we have five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven employees, so four out of the elevens, what, thirty, eight percent or something like that, it's not an insignificant amount of employees either, you know.
I, you know, one thing that I think I could just, good math problem is, when did this twelve hundred come into play? What was the insurance cost then? And has that twelve hundred kept up with the price of insurance, because the people that are taking insurance can get that benefit that costs more, but the folks that are taking the twelve hundred have got stuck right there.
Let me ask it this way, at what point is raising the taxes for employee retention gonna say, okay, well, my taxes are going up, so is it worth it to me?
Yeah.
Right, that that's that's the issue I have is, you know, if they live in town and we're raising taxes to help retain them, at what point does it start doing the opposite, which is why I think a a different discussion needs to happen as to what what can we do?
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, I I think that's a point, but at the same time, if we're talking a total municipal budget increase of ten thousand dollars, this this is a tenth, a tenth of a fraction of one penny on people's personal, personal income, and now these things all add up. They absolutely do add up, and that's something to be mindful of, but I don't think that the economics would be, if I vote to increase my own salary, I'm gonna pay out more taxes than I'm now receiving an added benefit, in this scenario, so, but I do see where you're going with with that question.
But but also, I don't think fourteen hundred dollars is what's gonna get someone to say, okay, I'm not leaving, I'm gonna take five dollars more an hour, three minutes down the road.
Yeah, that's a fair point too.
The five dollar model might do it, right?
Um.
It seems to be the way people take in lieu of is somebody's spouse who has a better deal, whatever that may be.
And and.
Well, kids never get sick, and they never get sick.
Or, and and that's what kind of brought that, like, you probably saw in the video too, like, looking at this from a perspective of just where are we sitting in line with our competitors is one thing, but then when you start looking at it from the perspective of like, well, if that in lieu of now is a larger increase than switching over to your spouse's, how many of these people who are taking single have that option to switch over to somebody else either, you know, those are, those are questions.
That, yeah, that's why, you know, even anecdotally from other town managers or or other, was her name, Betsy, the HR person, what's your experience on when you do this? Do people, how many people switch over, cause I I I think we have employees and we have all the other citizens, and we need to be mindful of when we increase cost, it has an impact on all the other citizens.
I I think her recommendation was fifty percent, because at fifty percent, that equalizes the compensation for people who choose not to take it or people who choose to to take it, because we're saying, well, we were budgeting for you fully exposed at like, we budget for a position, we're budgeting for the salary plus the full cost of fam, or or sorry, plus the full cost of singles, so insurance, correct?
No, we're budgeting what you see right here, which, this is what you've done in the past, you don't, you don't budget for, you don't budget for things that you don't see coming.
Well, I mean, if we were to post a new position, what we would budget not just basic, not just for the big, the salary, we'd budget for the salary plus benefits, correct?
Yeah, but.
And when we, when we, when we create that budget for the salary plus benefits, what are we budgeting for, are we budgeting for a single, family?
I mean, we talked about this last year, the year before, we're budgeting for family now, because we used to not.
No, we're not, we're budgeting for what is currently in that position right now.
Mm-hmm.
So like, the budget is is reflective of who's sitting in that seat right now, and what are they taking, single or family, we don't
Mm-hmm.
budget for the the most that it could be, for family.
But that's always a risk we're running too, because then if you, if someone leaves.
But, let me, I'll give you a case in point, if Jessica, Jessica tries, they try to poach Jessica or one of the others all the time, they just did it this week. So if she were to leave, right, she gets twelve hundred dollars in cash in lieu, the next person coming in could take family, that's twenty seven thousand, that's what it's gonna cost you when it's not budgeted for.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's.
That's, but, and I think that that's what.
Yeah.
But that's what you said earlier, we need a contingency buy, we should work on that, this come around.
Exactly, exactly.
But, so, but back to the insurance thing, with Betsy's recommendation being fifty percent, my understanding was, because her argument was that
Exactly.
if you were budgeting for a fully insured employee with a family insurance plan, and then they come in and they say, I don't need it, they're now saving you money because you budgeted for their full salary, salary plus twenty seven thousand seven hundred seventy five, and so, if they come in and take and say, I don't need that, you're splitting the difference and you're still coming in under budget, and you're now creating a more uh desirable position, that's my understanding of her logic on this.
It was, cause I think she's assuming that we budget for the family in every position, like a lot of
Should we be?
company agencies do, but we don't do that here, so.
Yeah.
Should we?
But I think that if, I think that if moving forward, if you were to come to us with a a position, we would need to, because you're not gonna, if if you can't say, well, if we hire you and you take family, we can't afford to pay it, you know.
Yeah, I mean, you could take this cereal tonight, you know, after uh, you know, June, say, September, uh this had happened, and uh they left, and that person took twelve hundred, we'd be great after the budget approval, but we'd have no money in the budget if they decided we made family health, cause.
Yeah, I I do think we're getting into a little bit different topic now, so I'd wanna bring us back into this discussion, it sounds like everyone wants to ruminate on this a little bit more.
We are. But.
Um, and and just take this as a a piece of information, because we have some other things related to, um, uh, we have Betsy coming next meeting also to talk a little bit more about uh some of the other things in the handbook, so I think that we wanna see all of the recommendations from the handbook first, and then we can maybe vote on some of these, consider these things have a fiscal note, so.
Yeah, and you have, you have time, it's just that when we start doing the budget, we're gonna wanna know how we're gonna move forward, that's.
Yeah, but I don't wanna vote on anything with a fiscal note in in reference to uh uh employee compensation until we know everything, and then we can have a discussion about that, does that work for folks?
Yeah.
Josh, does that work for you, John, Deb, does that work for you?
Good conversation, yeah, this is good.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And is there anything that you more would, might need to do in the meantime?
If Betsy could give us an idea in her experience of what percentage shift they see in in, um, and she might not have an answer, but if we can get an idea of,
Right.
she says, well, I've seen that when towns change to this, they have ten percent of their staff switch it up, you know. If, maybe she doesn't have that answer, maybe you can work your network of of uh town managers to see if any of them have any experience of what happened.
Yeah.
Not that it's gonna correlate exactly with what would happen here, but it's still additional information that I'd be interested in.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any other ask for Jerry on this?
Do we?
This is a conversation that happens in towns all over the place, which is why that spreadsheet got produced.
I'd like, um.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But could you send that to me, cause I couldn't see that, or I don't think I saw in the book, that movie, that she did, because it doesn't show up on the TV screen.
Well, yeah, who does this?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and like just real quick, perfect example, like Brunswick, I just looked quickly, like Bath gives twenty seven hundred, Brunswick gives five thousand, but like Bowdoin Ham, I think gives nothing, so like, these are just data points that don't necessarily need to mean end all be all, but we can get that to you, John, because we've had a kick in our minds.
Yeah, I just, if it's presentable, then.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think this topic is polite though too about employee retention efforts and the things that we could be doing that would make our employees more satisfied, which I hadn't sent, after we first talked about this, I think I, I think I sent you something just that.
Yeah, it's me. That one, no, I didn't, didn't want to share it with.
I'd be happy to be part of it, meet with you on it, just some ideas of things that we could just make people's lives happier.
I mean, I do think to Josh's point, there might be an opportunity to do a staff survey that just asks, you know, series of questions and like, you know, on a scale of one to five, how happy are you with your compensation, days off, health insurance, this and that, so we can just get a temperature of how how staff feels, you know, we have limitations, we don't make widgets, we don't sell products, so we we don't have the ability to increase, you know, our our business, or our our product expense to offset wages, so we do have, work within the constraints of the municipal government, but those sorts of data points could be helpful, especially for long term planning, I think. But I don't know, maybe maybe uh Betsy has some experience with that employee employee survey, and she'll be here next week, or next meeting.
Well, December.
December ninth, yeah, so if you could just flag that for her or something, where those two things, those things we're interested in.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll do it. Yeah, okay.
I'd like to just volunteer to be as a select board rep on this topic of employee retention and stuff, because I have some of my ideas from where I work, what we, things we do.
Okay.
I have just one last question, do we have a turnover problem? I mean, you know, they, nobody, we did two years ago, I mean, in the office.
No.
Yeah, you know what, you have.
I think we're trying to avoid a turnover problem, because there has been some staff members and former, actually former select board members who've been trying to poach people from town pretty regularly right now, so. We're trying to, we're trying to get ahead of it.
Well, you may have to be careful, because, you know, the Buxton Police got a new contract, they moved to the top, sort of middle, third, and a few months later, they moved back to the bottom and pay because everybody else got a new contract, so, it is a slight, slight deal, so, okay, I've said enough.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I think that's good, that's a good point, John. Alrighty, um, so what we want from this, I think that was a really good discussion, um, into new business, uh capital improvement policy discussion. Jerry, you wanna kick us off with this?
Yeah, uh, so I've kind of threw this together, um, a little help, uh, getting it polished up with A I. So I basically just put it together, what we do right now as far as capital improvement, um, there is no policy, but it'd be nice to have one. Um, so it's for you folks to kind of look over and decide what you wanna do as far as, um, policy, yeah. You know, when that year, the policy developers, you know, the policy implementer.
Yeah. Does anyone have any question, or Jerry, is there anything you wanna highlight to us at, from this document before we ask questions?
No, no, not really. From my cat, it's like, so I can, I can give you a summary of what we do, you know, right, well, well.
I think you, I think you did a good job.
Well.
I I was just saying, I think you did a good job with it, I think it outlines what we're doing and the reasons why we thought it was a good idea to do this. I mean, I mean, to to me, the 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 third goal, avoidance of debt and interest payments, I mean, how much money are we gonna save over a five or ten year period will we, uh, you know, avoid those significant amounts of money, uh, that we can avoid, we're saving the taxpayers, so.
Yeah, I think that this process looks really good, Jerry, um, for me, what I think to Josh's point, avoidance of debt and interest payments, what stands out most to me, and then fiscal responsibility and purchasing flexibility, I think over the last two years, we've seen uh instances where having that re, uh, a flexibility to expand out of capital reserve accounts has uh allowed us to capture um a really good uh savings on things like um the rapid response vehicle, um, you know, when there's the one, right one available, the right price available last year, or even um other capital expenditures, which I think allows us to be much more flexible and flexibility can save one in the long run.
Right, we're getting more use out of the, out of the equipment, because we can use it longer, so.
Yeah, well, and the other thing too is like, you know, I go back to my. Yeah, well, and the other thing too is like, you know, I go back to my limiting risk. Old equipment that breaks down becomes a safety liability and having to wait, you know, twelve months to get that replaced. That's, that can be a challenge, um, the other.
Plus the inventory too, from the interest.
Yeah, absolutely, um, the other thing I think is really good about this policy is that it allows us to project over a ten year period. Now, it's not static, everything's a projection, but rather than coming to people in ten years asking for a bond for a new fire truck or a new uh, plow truck, building that in, and I think that this really allows us to um, respect the experience and knowledge of our department heads to bring forth what they're seeing in their industry. Um, you know, and letting us, let, letting them do, giving them back the important work that they know that we don't know, you know? Replacement schedules and stuff like that, and I do appreciate that this still also gives them the opportunity to, when it comes time to purchase something, they're still bringing us several quotes, they're still getting another additional level of approval. There's a public uh, comment process, those sorts of things, so. This looks good to me, I don't have any additional questions on it, does anybody else have any additional questions on it or any comments that they want to make?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing with Josh, I need to get a bridge up with him.
Yeah.
I had a couple comments, are we, is the intent here that we?
Go down and approve this.
Okay, so, um, we call it the capital improvement, but it's only right now focusing on equipment.
Buildings.
And buildings.
And buildings, okay.
John, did you have any question, comments on it?
No, no.
Um, alright, well, if I don't have any other question in the comments, I take a motion to approve the town during capital improvement policy. So Josh's motion, so we have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Talbot, any additional?
Definitely agree with it.
Yeah.
Since you have other questions.
Well, yeah, any additional questions or comments on the motion?
They have, yes, you're right.
Okay, um, all in favor of the capital improvement policy motion? Any opposition? See none, that, was that all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, alright, see none, that passes unanimously, I'll quickly pass this down, this version for us to sign. Today is eleven eighteen twenty. Oh, my goodness gracious, I skipped over new business of welcoming our new member, uh, sorry, John.
Sorry. You, you did it already.
I, I did it already, and I will say, I, the reason I skipped over it is that even though you're new here, John,
No, that's a good start.
we hear you, we see you here most meetings, but, um, yeah, we're really happy to have you, I'm really, yeah, I'm really excited to have you here.
I hope you saw that, all the time.
Thank you, still signing.
I appreciate your, your eagerness, is there anything you wanted to say to?
Is there a candy?
Yeah.
Has the candy, but, um, is there anything you wanted to say, John?
No, I'm just happy to be here, I worked, you know, it's great work with the planning board, the budget committee, but I'm happy to be here too.
Well, I, we're happy to have you, but it's gonna be a, a big set of shoes to replace, and that, the roles you leave behind. Uh, but I think that in no part, in no small part to your leadership, especially on the planning board, they're in a really good position for you to have transition into this role, and so I think that we're kind of in the best of both worlds here, so I, I really appreciate it and that.
Yeah.
It's on our way.
Uh, I actually have, I have paused, I was, I missed, I missed it again. Um, alright, uh, budget process discussion. So this is something we've been uh, working on as a board for about a month or so now, um. And we've got this laid out, John, I don't know if you've caught up to speed on this yet, but this is our, with, with our, moving over to a, the June town meeting, uh, we thought it would be a good idea to lay out what our budget process would look like for the year. And so I just wanna go through it here for folks at home who are watching or, or going to be watching at some point. Um, first and foremost, in the first week of this uh, January, you know, per our new capital improvement policy, the town manager is gonna uh, talk with the department heads to get an update schedule and costs, you know, we're extrapolating over ten years. So when twenty twenty six begins, we're now looking to twenty thirty six rather than looking to twenty thirty five. We'll have our regular select board meeting on Ju- uh, January thirteenth, which will be our land use amendment meeting. On the nineteenth of January, the CIP is gonna be due to the town manager, and that's gonna get forwarded to Mark, our accountant. We'll have another regular meeting on the twenty seventh of January. And then in early February, the budget workbooks on the second is gonna get to the department heads. We'll have two regular select board meetings, and then by the beginning of March, department heads are submitting their budget to the town manager. On the first meeting in March three ten twenty twenty six, the town manager is gonna present the budget to the select board. And then the following two meetings, the twenty fourth and uh, then April fourteenth, the budget workshop with the select board and department heads is gonna commence, as well as the budget workshop, um, where we finalize the budget. And then beginning on the four sixteen twenty twenty six, we will send our budget documents to the budget committee um, for them to start doing their process. And so we'll then review, we'll work into our normal uh, drafting of warrant articles on the twenty eighth of April. And then our annual report documents are gonna be due on the thirtieth. And then, one thing I wanted to do differently this year, and I think we all talked about it a little bit, is currently, right now, we develop our budget, and we send it to the budget committee, and then if the budget committee wants to, they can invite us to a meeting, ask a representative from the select board questions, but we've been told that they, you know, they're in the driver's seat, it's the questions they wanna ask, we're only there to be spoken, speak, would be spoken to, and this process, um, has been challenging over the last couple of years, with, you know, people's voices getting raised, people yelling at people, um, people going on to suggest impropriety in the town manager and the select board, in the budget process. And I think what would be a better process is if on, after we've given our budget, finalized budget on the four, sixteenth of April to the budget committee, we then invite the budget committee in, after they have had, um, almost a month to meet, they'll have a month to meet, develop all their questions, bring up all their concerns, and then we'll invite them to our meeting where we can answer all questions that they have, um, at the select board meeting, you know, that's, those are televised. And then we can um, take into consideration any recommendations that they send to us after that meeting. And then we will then go forward and uh, finalize our, our budget after that. So rather than hoping that we get invited to speak, answer questions at the budget committee meeting, and then hoping we're allowed to speak, or hoping that we're addressed, I think it would be better for us as the uh, uh, executive body in the town to invite them and, and ask them to provide us with their questions and answer opportunity in, in, in that capacity. Um, what do folks think about that?
That what we discussed before, I think.
Yeah, but I just wanted to go through this process before we, and finalize it, cause Jerry and I tweaked a couple of dates to make sure that it lines up and gives everyone the appropriate amount of time before we finalize this and send it to the budget committee, and I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. Rebecca, did you have any questions?
Yeah, no, I was just, we'll shoot the answer.
My only concern is, um, my glass on, it's not helping. The workshop is on the fifth of, what is that, May, and then, uh, the expectation is though, the budget committee will vote and provide their recommendations two days later.
Yeah, I understand.
That's an awful short.
Yeah, my.
Opportunity, and I'm not sure what the goal of the workshop is, but, you know, so they, that basically gives them a day to kind of.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was why we wanted to initiate this process with a lot of lead time, because we do have some constraints on when we need to get things to the, um, the printers and stuff like that. And my hope was, if I can provide this to them with, you know, seven months notice, they could slot in now. We're gonna meet on five, six to review, so, to review all the questions that were answered by the select board. So this would allow them a month to meet before they have questions for us, create all their questions, have all their ducks in a row as to, why is this like this, why is this like this? We'll have that meeting with them, we'll answer those questions, and then they can have the turnaround the next day to have their meeting and say, okay, this is the answers we got, and here's how we wanna change based off of the select board's answers or stuff like that. Provide us with their budget recommendations, and then the next day, we can, the next uh, date, uh, meeting, we can reconcile, um, their, their recommendations and then move forward, yeah.
I, I think the issue is, is that last year we were told they wanted to have our, the, the draft articles before they voted. Uh, and so we're not, I mean, we're not voting on that, the draft articles until the twenty eighth. And so we have to have everything voted on by the twelve, so we have that one week in between. And, and ideally, we would be having them to have this conversation, I think, before the April twenty eighth meeting. But because the Congress, the information that we were given last year, they want those, are those articles.
Yeah, cause we're, we're.
Well, I will defer to the, the budget committee chair, you know, in, in a day whether, you know, his, you guys are sure we'll talk to him. But the, I went, I've looked at the draft articles since that conversation, the articles don't change.
Which is what we said last year.
I mean, you know, so could we, is there not a way, if we just wanna check a block with them, or, just, cause the only thing that ever changes is the amount, the dollar value, and then whether the select board and the budget committee agree.
And that, that's exactly our point we had made was, you know, cause last year, I mean, that hour, I mean, you, you were on the committee, there's members who said, well, I'm not voting until we have draft articles. This is the timeline we have to go through to have draft articles, cause essentially, we need to finalize our budget and then make draft articles, and then provide the budget committee with our budget. And I know last time when we mentioned that, there was some very raided voices about being upset that we were gonna draft articles without their input. But at the same time, if they're saying they don't wanna comment on them until they have draft articles, this is the only way we can fit that timeline in. Um, and so, this is why we came up with this process, uh.
Well, I think some of the concern about article language was my first year on the, and maybe before, when I was watching on television. There was, it, it was, you know, article that was saying, we're gonna take money out of this fund, we're gonna take money out of that fund, you know? So someone's gonna come inside the article, and we do it differently now. Now it's, it is, here's the total, we're not saying where the money for fires coming.
Yeah.
And so I think that was a concern is, what reading in between the lines was, the article itself had more, uh, requirements.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're taking out of the fire reserve, we'll, we'll take it from, I mean, I think it's, it may, maybe not remembering right, but there was discussion about, oh, we'll take it out of the telecommunications, telecommunications fund. That's gone, now it's just kinda, it's coming out of, out of a fund, one fund, and then we decide, okay, we're gonna tax to get this amount, and then we're gonna take this amount out of the reserves in a general way.
Yeah.
If that makes sense, so that, that confusion about what was inside the article, uh, hopefully you agree with me.
Yeah, I think also you're thinking of ARPA funds too, there were a couple articles.
And ARPA funds were in there.
Yeah, cause it used to be each warrant was saying where those dollars were coming from, as opposed to raise and appropriate
Yeah.
or just a better spend, and then we would say, we're spending this out of our fund balance to offset, and then bring to this rate, so like,
Exactly.
which I totally get, it used to be different, but even with it being the way we're suggesting to do it now, that's how it was last year. And we still ran into that midnight hour of, no, we're gonna have a special meeting, can you wait for the warrant language? And so.
Some of it is, you know, the experience, and again, I defer to the, the budget committee chair, you know, to have that conversation.
Maybe you could have that conversation with the chair. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges too, as you know, having sat in the budget committee is that there's no legislatively approved document dictating the policies of the budget committee. And so when there's just kind of a general sense of rules developed annually, like we're gonna adopt this, or we're gonna change this, um. We don't know what rules the budget committee wants to self-compose until their first week. And that's tough, because like we have dictated policy based off of the state statute and the land use ordinance, whereas the budget, there's no mention in the budget committee, the land use ordinance, there's no mention in the budget committee state statute other than if one exists, their recommendation has to be included. And so, we don't have to talk to the budget committee at all, we could just send them the, and I'm not saying this is a good idea, but we could just send them the budget and say, here's our budget, let us know what you think, and we'll put it on there. And so I think that this is a good way to address that, but.
I, I really agree with you, and I would just say that maybe it'd be a conversation between you, the chair of the budget committee.
Yeah.
At one time, I think last year was a discussion about chairs and vice chairs meeting, and if they ask, and I, I don't know if that's necessary, but
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think because there's nine of them, or eight, I guess now, you know?
Yeah.
Hurting that, that goof cats, some on a short notice could be, even if they don't, if they ask, I think.
Yeah.
So I leave that, to kind of, you know, I just make that comment.
Well, I think that we could send, if, as long as people are good with this, we can send it to the chair and the vice chair of the budget committee and tell them that this is our proposed process, um, and that if they want to propose a different process with us, that we need to know that now, cause we're gonna be locking this process in, uh, before December. Because that, our, our wheels start turning on this first month of Jan- first week of January.
You know, getting to the revenue, uh, revenues, 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 different pockets of revenue, right? So it all adds up to revenue, so you got this, what pocket you take it out of, doesn't really matter, but it's like, if you, if you've got a job and you cash your check, and you put five dollars in this pocket, ten dollars in that pocket, you're gonna buy a cup of coffee, what pocket you take it out of, it doesn't matter, it's all revenue.
Well, and I think we've changed, I tend to agree with you, and, uh, I think there is some concern about protecting the, the reserves, which is a conversation we need to have, because the reserves is probably one of the biggest, if not the biggest, you know, thing we're gonna have to fund next year, how, but I think if, if it's all kind of, if the chairs agree, then I think, you know, the committee will agree. And again, I understand what you're saying.
I don't know if the, if the chairs agree, the committee will agree, but we'll, we'll, cause I thought we've been there before, but we'll, we'll see.
You both run a very strange, sure, so, and I agree with you, Jerry, I mean, I, I think, but I think that in the past, it was defined inside the article.
It was, and that was a very old-fashioned way of doing.
Don't argue.
Yeah.
No, I don't.
And I think part of the reason, I, I may be misspeaking here, but I think part of the reason why the town wanted to move to town manager's former government is to kind of bring you all into the twenty first century, you know, the town government.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of it, right? I mean, I'm not trying to be.
No, and I think that's part of it, I don't know if it'll be the same, uh, concern this year, I mean, I can't, I don't wanna speak for them.
Well.
Uh, but I think, you know, going in with the chair to say this way is gonna be, and I, the only thing I see changing from last year's article is the total amount, and whether the two boards, two committees, boards agree.
Yeah, well, I think, I think here, this is what my thought is. Sometimes we've changed the process in the last, we've changed the process drastically in the last five years between adding a town manager and changing of our everything, but every year at the meeting, we hear, well, we used to do it this way, why aren't we doing it this way anymore? This is our new proposed thing, with the board's permission, would everyone be alright if myself and the vice chair, uh, Josh here reached out to the chair and the vice chair of the, of the budget committee and just said, hey, can we sit down, cause this is the process we wanna go through with you all? Um, this is what we're proposing.
I think it's great, I think.
Because if their comfort level is, well, you know, the warrant language doesn't change it, that, we can move up their, their invitation to a, their invitation to come ask us, for us to answer their questions and give them a little bit more lead time. But if they're saying that they want warrant language, then this is what they're gonna have to deal with. And just frankly, because of, um, you know, frankly, because of the behavior of some of the individuals on the committee the last two years, I'm not gonna subject our town staff and, and our board members to kind of uh, excoriation in, in a seat three nights in a row, raise voices, yelling, those sorts of things, it's not conducive to functioning of town business, and if that raised temperature just gets people a little too wound up, and I think that this could be a process that achieves a better outcome, involves all the same voices. And so if, if the board's okay with this, you know, maybe Josh and I, or Josh, if you're busy, someone else, myself, can meet with the chair and the vice chair of the budget committee, propose this process to them with the understanding that we're gonna vote on this at our, our, at our second December meeting, as the process we're locking in for the year. And if they disagree with this, or they need to make adjustments, like we need to know before that, so. Does that work with the board?
Yeah.
Cause Josh, John, you reminded me, they did vote last year to give the authority to their chair and vice chair to have a meeting with.
Yeah, I think they were looking forward to it.
Yeah, so I'll email them this week, I'll CC folks too. Uh, but before we meet, no concerns on this process, ask the folks from the board right now?
Nope.
Okay, so we're gonna move along here to, uh, manager report.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you, so one thing I'll report on, the giving tree applications are available December first, and the tags will be available for December third, so that means that we gotta. So that means that we got an application, the commander fill it out, you know, like December third, the tags will be there on the tree to take.
Exactly.
And we do this every year.
Exactly, we're on the middle of last, on Facebook.
It's on, yeah, it's on, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, another thing that I'll report on, so for the last two weeks, we've had two community members, Kathy Center and Jeanine Costigan, collecting food donations for Laco, and the turnout here in Durham was fantastic.
Yeah, that was awesome.
Yeah, it was awesome.
Yeah, and, uh, the community really stepped out of its time of need, so, thanks to them and their wonderful support.
How is that organized, like, on a Facebook page or something?
Uh, the, uh, Eureka, so both of those, um, people are on the Eureka Community Center, um, committee. And I think at one of the meetings, they just decided to to get together and do that now.
Um, one thing that you could be aware of is that Durham's doing the annual ornament parade, uh.
What now?
The annual, Jessica probably speak to it more, but it's the.
We'll find out about it soon.
Annual ornament parade, it's December fourth and it's at nine AM. What are the school parades?
So it's a pre tag and tag, so they walk over in a in a slow line, so class by class, they go over and usually the fire chief and Calvin will bring over a truck and like, you know, a dump truck and a fire truck. So each class will come over, they'll take pictures of the trucks, and then they come into the building and they hang, they make ornaments for our tree.
Oh.
And they hang the ornaments, and then we give them a little big bag and they walk back over.
Yeah.
It's the fourth year we've done it. So if you guys wanna come that morning.
Yeah, just.
You said it's like December fourth, that's what it's like?
It's a Thursday at nine before you're back.
At now.
They're right at Sean, cuz they can walk across the field.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't have to take a bus.
Pretty cool, it's pretty cute. So you want to welcome, stop there, check that out.
We could, might could look it, yeah.
Um, so December third is, uh, an RSU five, uh, leadership meeting, um, all attendments at nine, it's at six thirty. They'll discuss with, uh, other RSU five generators, you know, budgets and anything that we see that might add to the budget. So, the one welcome, the one, did you?
I think I was better on last year, but I might, I'll I'll go.
So I'll be doing that, I'll be going to that on, um, December third. Um, the last thing that I got for you is that Josh and I attended the Northern GP cog membership meeting, and it was a pretty good meeting and, uh, the, uh, Josh, we talked about this before, I don't have a lot of impression, but we seem to all have the same issues with social media and misinformation. And some people, believe it or not, might add a little version of it, so I'll I'll leave, I'll leave it at that tonight. So, uh, other than that, um, you want to go to reflections? Yep, Jessica, I'll just re-poll on something.
So I just wanna talk about Election Day, because that was a huge day, I don't think you guys came, but, so, um, we had a huge turnout.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we, I'm just gonna run some numbers here, so four hundred ninety one absentee ballots for cast. So, we processed those that day. And then, um, thirteen eighty nine, that's the one thousand three hundred eighty nine people voted that day. So combined, that's, um, you know, that's a lot. So it's almost half the town.
One thousand eight hundred eighty people.
Yes, that was total ballots cast, so, um, almost half the town turned up that day. So, um, and we lost power several times, I don't know if you remember, that's when the power flickered, it was really windy. Um, so luckily, the Amets have a generator, which I don't know if you remember, but we, the town donated some money towards that generator.
Mm-hmm.
So it kicked right on, it was awesome, then it kicked off because of the flickering, cuz of the power to come on and then go off, and so I think he got confused. So it went off, and I just kinda waited a little bit, cuz the machine we use has a two hour battery backup. Um, so after about forty five minutes, I got nervous and I made a call to the Commander. And he, um, rallied his people instantly, within ten minutes, I had three people there, they got the generator running like that. And then throughout the day, those three people kept checking in with me, um, one of them brought me their personal power bank in case it, we lost it again. So they just were very supportive, I just want you guys to know that, they, they really did a great job. Making sure that we stayed running and there were no problems, so, I'll report that. I also wanna report that, um, the lighting in the parking lot is not good. So, um, I talked to Calvin and next time, because every other year, um, we'll be at the school. So next time there's a referendum, we're gonna, uh, rent some lights, so.
Just in a budget.
It was very dark, yeah.
Yeah, cuz that's right after the hour, roll back in time.
Yes, it was, it was really dark.
It was, I was there, it was pitch black, yeah, it was.
Yeah, it was making me very nervous, cuz, um, people were kinda hanging out and talking and, yeah, so it was crazy. And I wanna thank my election workers, because, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I think you're a churners.
Those are the churners, cuz, um, when you cast an absentee ballot, I don't know if you're aware of that, we have to handle that ballots several times, so, even though you don't come, like, your ballot's being handled by several different people during that day, so, it's a lot.
Eighteen hundred and eighty ballots is a lot.
Yeah, yes, yes, so we have thirty five hundred registered voters, so, that was a great turnout, that's wonderful.
That's amazing.
And I'm just grateful that everything was smooth and, yeah.
Lot of stickers.
Yeah.
Lot of stickers, um.
You did a wonderful job.
And thank you, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you and to everybody else, all the volunteers, everyone.
Yes, they did a great job, um, I had a couple of newbies and they just jumped right in, so, it's great.
That's awesome, it's always, whenever I go by the vote, it's always great to see how many different people are volunteering, I feel like every time I vote, there's something different.
Yes.
Um, who's working the the check in or something like that, takes a village, you know?
I do, yes, and I do have to start recruiting, because, um, some of them are, you know, probably gonna retire from election work, so, um, just gonna put that out there. Um, and also just, um, so I feel like any more on that day would put the Amets facility at capacity.
Mm-hmm.
So just keep that in mind, so.
Yeah.
That parking lot couldn't accommodate many more cars.
Yeah, it was tight.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Jerry, just maybe you have anything else?
She really wanted me to close the office.
Close the office?
Yeah.
I did, so I could have my deputy.
Yeah, so.
Because if something happened to me, yeah, because.
Go on Election Day.
Yeah, so it puts a lot of pressure on her, but yet, I, you know, I didn't know, really know where to go with that, you know, it's a referendum vote and, some did, some don't, so I, you know, I, it's it's a, it's a difficult call, cuz I wanna support her, but I want the office to be open too, so,
Right, right.
Because of our limited staff and my more concern honestly is with staff versus having the office open, so, in the future, we may, depending on, like, next year, it'll be a Google presidential election, so, more likely, we're gonna have to shut the office and have staff, all all hands on deck.
Do.
I think done that before.
Yeah, we do.
You did.
I didn't do it this time, yeah.
No, but like last year.
The presidential.
Yeah, for the president.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So I think anytime we're at the school order, it's gonna be a large turnout, we we're in a position now where we probably should shut the office.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I did kinda risk it, but she was, she was nervous about that, so, not the middle of us, given the capacity of our workforce, you may have to.
Yeah.
A turnout like that, I didn't think it was gonna be that big.
I didn't either, when I opened the doors and saw fifty people waiting in line, I was like.
So, those are some of the calls, so nothing got made, so.
Yeah.
But that's all I got, anything?
Um, so for my report, a couple of things I wanted to say. Uh, the Sons of the Amets have, um, gotten their signs, uh, for suicide awareness, uh, in in that, to put it, the boat launch. Unfortunately, there's been a couple of suicides there this year, and, uh, they took it upon themselves to get these, uh, signs pulled together. They received approval from us a little while back, and those are going up, um, sometime soon, once the signs get in, uh, somewhere around November twenty fourth or twenty fifth. And I just wanna thank them a lot for that effort, it's really meaningful and really great to see them, um, even if it's for unfortunate reasons, step up in that capacity, so I really appreciate that a lot.
Mr. Jerry, can we put that on the the website, you know, the phone number, awareness stuff, the suicide stuff?
Yeah, I think that would be a good thing, once the, once.
Maybe already doing it, the the weekly blast and other things.
Yeah, might be a good idea to, cuz I believe this month is Suicide Awareness Month too. Um, and so, good signs could go up and, uh, we could, we could just, you know, share the nine eight eight, so. The other thing I wanna say is a huge thank you to the Amets for that generator, um, you know, my question is, is, you know, that's their diesel and they're running on that generator while we're there, and so if there's an opportunity for us to indicate to them that they should maybe come ask for a reimbursement from the town for some of that, because we use it for them, I would entertain that, I don't know about the rest of you all, um, but, uh, I don't know how that works, um, you know, we don't have a recreational reserve or anything like that, but, you know, that's above and beyond, you know, that's they, that's them incurring a cost.
Yes.
For for us, from us, so I just want, maybe that's something you can workshop a little bit with Jerry. Uh, I wanna say tomorrow, so I'm I'm on a, uh, GP cog committee that's meeting tomorrow, we're meeting on, uh, tax stabilization. So, Deb and I attended a meeting, was it this calendar year or last year?
Last year.
Um, we attended a meeting last year where we all convened and kinda talked about the challenges that municipalities are having. And especially for municipalities our size and in this northern region, it's, uh, you know, increasing tax burden largely due to, um, schools and, uh, county and stuff like that, and so everyone's hearing the same thing. What are you doing wrong at the municipal level, because my taxes are going up, and here, we've had essentially stable tax, uh, 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 tax change, there's in some cases, it's almost a decrease for like two or three years at the municipal level, but that gets gobbled up by a large increase at, uh, the school and the county. And so, the GP cog is pulled together committee and asked if I would be on it, um, to start working on ways that we can figure out how to come up with strategies to stabilize the tax burden. Uh, we're all dealing with the same issue, some of the larger municipalities are like, well, what we need is a local sales tax. But that doesn't do anything for places like Durham, if Wyndham's charging a local sales tax and people are throwing out things like, well, if we're charging a local sales tax, maybe twenty percent of that can go to a county fund and then goes to municipalities who don't have a lot of local, um, uh, uh, commerce. And these are all things we're just getting, you know, throwing the kitchen sink at it, and tomorrow's our first meeting, and so I'll let you, just let you all know how that goes, um. You know, there's a lot of good ideas bouncing around there, GP cog also has the ability to, um, advocate for legislation that can help with tax stabilization for seniors and things like that, and so I'll I'll report back on that. But other than that, I don't have anything else for my boardman, uh, member report. Mr. Josh?
Uh, so, Jerry, Jerry and I went to a meeting, Jerry hosted it, um, it was, I think, I think we looked at each other, what, every couple of minutes and just said, huh, we just talked about that at one of our meetings. Uh, so I think, I think the entire region's kind of going through the same, same thing, how to address, um, you know, the misinformation that's out there. I think, I think it was North Yarmouth who has a section on their website where they post the misinformation and then incorrect information, I think that was an interesting way to go.
I called it, just the facts.
Just the facts, yeah, so I said, we come up, if 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 we ever did something like that, we have a better name, so we have to work on that.
I think I got the judge.
You got one, uh, but, uh, I think there was a.
I I know, I'm sure I know what you're thinking.
There was, there was a conversation about, you know, I think different ideas about, that that we had talked about at our meeting, was it the day prior or the week prior?
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, and this seemed like a much better idea than I don't think we we had even brought up. Uh, I can't even remember, I had notes, I left them in my car, uh, uh, there was other things about, uh, economic development was an issue that that people are facing, uh. So it was really interesting to see, uh, how all these communities in our region, uh, are really facing the same struggles, not just us. Um, uh, and I think, uh, you know, the, some of the things that Cumberland County is doing, I think is interesting, it'll be helpful if if we were in Cumberland County, so that was a little, a little disappointing. Uh, but, uh, uh, you know, I think, I think we're making good progress, and I think that showed that, you know, we're addressing it and we're not alone, and, you know, if there's a way for us to work together with these other communities, uh, I think we need to, you know, take advantage of it and and do that, and I think the 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 usage of our membership at GP cog has expanded recently. Uh, and I think that's a big plus for us, and we need to keep taking it back, Jerry.
Yeah, I know that, Josh, when you and I first were on the Board, we kinda considers ourselves the black sheep of the GP cog family, but if we look at the amount of value we've been able to extract from that membership for the last few years, it's increased exponentially.
Yeah, uh, they, I mean, you know, all all the worship they've done, the stuff they've helped us with, the grants, they were, I mean, all that, but also just, I think the conversation of bringing us together, uh, it's, it's, it, you can't put a price on it. And I just wanna say also, you know, the election, I know you're busy, everybody was very friendly, everybody was still happy when I went, which was five, five thirty-ish, uh, uh, and so, uh, you know, again, you did a great job, I, you know, sympathetic, cuz I I I would have agreed with Jerry not to shut the office down, cuz I, um, but, uh.
Report, most of the reports office.
I, I know, I know, but I I do agree with this number, I think surprised me that, uh.
Surprised me, I didn't.
You know, when you when you posted the results, I looked at the number and I said to my wife, I, do we even have that many? I mean, it's, it's like, it seemed like it was, you know, other than the presidential presidential election, it was like two or three times what we normally get.
Yes.
Uh, and so, um, so I do, Jerry, I I do think it's probably the right thing to do, I I hate it, hate it, I wish we would hire more people to do it, but, you know. But, I I do, so, I I did wanna say thank you, and, uh, I think, and I agree with Joe, your sentiments about the, uh, the science from the Sons of the Amets, uh, I I think that's very generous of them, I'm thankful that they did that.
Yeah. I'll second that on the signage, I'm not supposed, and, uh, Jessica's role, and everybody who volunteered, or are they volunteers? The.
Um, will they get me?
Okay, good, everyone who worked that is, was great, then. So I just did wanna mention that Calvin and I met with Jerry a couple of weeks ago to discuss, uh, the automated trash pickup plan that Casella has. Jerry had asked the Solid Waste Committee to provide some recommendations, be informed about this coming up, so Calvin and I went, which we were ago, but we went, I think the meeting was the next day, or maybe two days later. I had prepped some notes for that meeting, and we had a really good meeting on that topic. So the Solid Waste Committee meeting is putting together some questions, the Casella rep is coming to the next meeting, the first, second week in December, um, to talk through that a bit, and then the plan will be there with the Solid Waste Committee, um, Chair and Co-Chair will come to the Select Board sometime right soon after that.
Thank you for your leadership on this, Deb, it's really, really great to have someone wrangling that group together.
Well, I'm sure, I'm called Wrangler, okay, thank you.
I mean, we should, should we mention, I probably should, that the automation that's coming, like, sort of, that we follow, so.
So we were notified, the town was notified that three months earlier or more?
Yeah, so we're gonna try to, they they wanna get, they have the chart, they're ready to go March first.
March first. That's fine.
Um, meeting discussion there.
Well, I think we, we were gonna have an upcoming meeting here, I don't, I don't see other reasons, but, um, yeah, we need to talk about that as a group, but we have, we are doing some behind the scenes work to bring to the committee, to the Select Board, um, to help, you know, uh, with the discussion.
Can I ask, would you have, would you vote on Solid Waste Committee, one of the issues that I see, at least with my trash cans, is, you know, I'm on the side of it, I put them on the side of a busy road. And they never are in the same general area that I put them on it, like, they're in the ditch.
You mean after they're empty, they're just.
You know, and, uh, you know, I I I spent two hundred dollars on a new trash can recycle bin and two weeks later, they were both destroyed.
Wow.
Uh.
I bought a new one, I watched the guy break it the first time I put it out there, I was like, oh, forget it.
Um, and so I don't know, I don't know who does it, I don't know if people are hitting it, what, but, um, you know, for me, what what I would like to do, what I haven't done, because this automated, it's like, put something out there that basically they like hook on to. Because, uh, because otherwise, you know, in the middle of winter, I'm trudging through the snow into the woods to get them, uh, into the, uh, into the the water. This past Friday, you know, I go home and it was like six o'clock, and I almost fell into the ditch, trying to go down into the ditch to get it. Um, and and so, you know, they're gonna start, they're gonna charge you, if they're gonna charge me, uh, for these things, when they get hit, they're gonna make me bring it across the street where I could leave at the end of my driveway, um, and, uh, and not have it. And then they're gonna make me bring it across the street where I could leave at the end of my driveway um and uh and not have it hopefully be hit as much or go into a deep ditch in in the pitch black. Uh, I'd like to know if there were ways to avoid that, you know, could, short of like putting concrete in the bottom so that people don't hit it and stuff, like like that that's the point where I I I've been at, like, like they they barely work, but because we're going to the system, I haven't spent the two hundred dollars to get new ones.
Okay, I'll dra- I'll track up some kind of constant question.
Everybody knows it's a trigger for me.
No, no supply of that.
The first one, what, when someone hits it or?
If it disappears.
Yeah, I'll put that, we've got a list of questions going out, I'll add that, Calvin, Calvin's putting them together.
Yeah, if it disappears, you don't buy that.
'Cause remember, Jerry, you and I had a conversation for, there was like six weeks where they said, put it on this side of the road, put it on this side of the road, do this, do that. There were three weeks where it didn't get picked up, and then they told me, move it to the to my side of the street, I did, then they yelled at me and said, put it on the other side of the street. And
What what's what street, what street you on?
It's gonna What's gonna be awesome and cool like this, if you have day troubles, you get to call the Casella to
Yeah, and one thing that is on the pitch now is
Yeah, it's awesome to do, not the rest of us who had to call them.
We want to encourage people to download the Casella app.
Right.
Um, I can't remember, did I, is that, do we get that on the newsletter recently?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, 'cause I
It's it's usually online.
I actually, that's right, 'cause I actually put a picture of it on the Durham town site there, but anyway, okay, that's me, thank you.
I was just, Pono's using them now.
Yes.
Pono ha- Pono has that system more, and they, the folks I've known, they seem happy with it.
Yeah, there's some other, there are a few questions I have there about um we just gonna have a fiscal, you know, watch revenue by the tags and stuff like that, but we can get into that.
We we reorganize, we already organize that, I'll send you the
Yeah, I don't need to have that discussion, but it's just someone's talking on it.
I'll send you the
Um, Rebecca, do you have any, or sorry, was that, is that, I'm getting names so much. Rebecca, do you have anything?
Yes, a few things. Um, by the way, also thank you to Jessica and everyone, because in the morning, you guys were so chipper and it was really good.
The next morning or the morning
They were chipper and they get it too.
Morning of the vote, not the morning after. Should've brought you guys coffee, I'm doing this. Um, the uh, I have gone uh uh, because you all so wonderfully elected me to attend the early childhood education task force. Um
Why don't you volunteer?
It is actually very interesting and so it's going very well. And there's some things, Jerry, that you're gonna end up knowing from the meeting that you and Joe really go to in terms of what the state, the new state law, what we're already doing in RSU five, because we already have a pre-K program. Um, but really implementing it and moving forward with it. So there may be some budgetary concerns, but things are moving along and it's a very interesting conversation. Um, the other thing which I am pretty sure I sent to everybody, I did attend or uh sat in on a communications seminar, so very similar to what you guys were talking about in terms of incorrect information out there. I sent you guys all the PowerPoint. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look through it. Um, from my standpoint, it was not the most interesting thing, but I think from some people who don't necessarily know a lot about communications, this would be very good to have taken a look at.
Mm-hmm.
So just
You're an industry insider, so it's all
Yeah, I I mean, yeah, so
You're pro.
Um, but yeah, it I think it was, it was good. It's, yes, we're not the only town that was uh in the middle of a social media standup. Um, and then a concerned citizen who also um is on a board had mentioned, and I think we've had a conversations about this, in terms of signage for voting. So I think, I I'm pretty sure we've talked about this in terms of where people go, 'cause there had been some questions, whether to go to Ambets or the school, and I don't know if there's a way that we could also, we also
There's always, there's always
I know, I know, there's always something about it.
So the only time we're ever gonna be at the school is if we're voting for the governor or the president.
No, 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 I no, 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 I I know this, I'm just saying what was out there. And so other people
Okay.
did, I'm not gonna respond to that, but other people um did answer correctly on the all things Durham page, but this um but this person did have a good point in terms of maybe with the flashing light that we have uh for the uh um driving
Speed limit?
Speed limit to say voting at Ambets or something like that. Do we have that?
It can, it it it
It's a speed limit.
It's only the limit.
It can, yeah, but
Didn't you, wasn't there the the sandwich sign on the
So we put, so we put on the sandwich sign, the Ambets had it on their board.
I know, we had it on I know.
So anyone in Durham don't want thirty six, that's something.
I'm I'm
This is one of the
We did a tax, we did two tax, I think, didn't we?
It was a text.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was on the last.
And we had it on the last and we had it on the
And when people register, I tell them
It's in the newspaper.
Yeah, and it's on Facebook.
You only ever go to the school if you're voting for the president or the governor.
I know, I'm just, I'm just
There's only only so many things.
But I do appreciate you bringing it up.
I'm just, I'm just bringing it up.
Yes.
This is not the first time that some sort of need for downtown community sign has been reached.
The school even puts a sign out, or they used to. They put a white, it said, not here today, go to the Ambets.
Maybe I'll take the day off and next year and like dress up in a fun outfit and have the voting
Like this, this is a board.
So have it, yes, state board.
spinning outside or something and stand at the corner there and, don't go this way, go that way. Jerry, that could, if you close the town office, Jerry could do
Jessica's again. Oh, God, Jerry.
Just kidding. Jerry's like, town office is staying open.
I got work to do.
Um, Rebecca, one thing you just said that I'm really happy to hear, you said it, Josh said it, and I said it. When we go to other things with other communities and we hear, wow, we're not the only ones.
We're not allowed.
Wow, somebody, some people in some ways have it way worse. Like, I kinda feel relieved when I leave those meetings a little bit and I'm like, ooh.
Yeah.
'Cause I've had the same thing, like I think you said, Josh, looking over at Jerry after a meeting and I leave and I go, we're kinda lucking out on this, you know?
It was like, there were at least like three things people were mentioning that we had talked about at the previous meeting.
Right.
And saying the exact same thing.
Peace, people.
It was unbelievable.
That's right. Oh, and one more question. Um, there was, Jessica, there was the uh, I think the Sun Journal was here uh at the Ambets for voting, or
Oh, the journalist taking pictures, he was from the Morning Star.
From the Morning Star?
Yeah.
It's the Morning Star?
I don't know. Okay.
Who picked, I know, I'll give you the name.
Interesting.
John, do you have anything for your board member report?
Uh, RSU, RSU five has a budget workshop tomorrow, if you're interested. They usually telecast it. So I'm sure they will begin discussing, you know, how much they're gonna raise and all the taxes and stuff like that. And then uh, the other, the other thing is, um, they're probably a lot more fun now that I'm gone, but I would recommend you watch the planning board meetings if you wanna get some more in-depth on what the way news ordinances are about. So it's a good opportunity to get the knitting ready.
Yeah, I agree. Are you planning on watching the budget, RSU Budget Committee meetings?
Uh, I probably will, 'cause I have no life. I mean, if you have
No, that's all being a dedicated public servant.
I have, I have basically no life.
Well, we appreciate that. I I'll say we appreciate your dedication to the town. You can refrain now, I really love, that's all I'm about.
I think I've said it, it is true, but
Um, all right, uh, Deb, uh, seen all the board member reports, I have a motion to approve and sign the AP warrant and the consent agenda.
Sure.
But everybody said
Can we talk a little bit about the consent agenda? We've got a couple applications that you might have to go, but this probably really shouldn't have been a different matter. 'Cause there there are committee appointments, so it's, maybe you don't consent to it, so
Yeah, let's take a look here.
One, that's for the Solid Waste Committee and the other one's the Conservation Committee. I don't know, Jessica, do you think there's any brush on approval this right now that
Um, nope, so the, I looked it up, the Conservation Committee, I think, needs one more member. I think they have six, they have six members and I think their bylaws say they can have seven. And the other one is Solid Waste and that would probably be to replace the person that just got off, um, Claire.
Actually, the Solid Waste has an alternative now that we moved into a permanent position, and this person would be an alternate.
Oh, okay, yep. She'd be, that's, yeah.
Um, does anyone want to pull this out for consideration on a later date or have any reason to go into executive session pursuant to these uh committee nominated committees' volunteers?
The two of them, two of them?
Yeah.
One behind me.
I I'll second the motion, we have a motion, I'll second it.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I'm happy to vote on these. Uh, I know the person who is applied for municipal because I know the person, at least I'm, I I'm happy now to vote on the Conservation Committee, because I am very well much aware of this person. Um, Kelly Wall, uh, she's a environmental consulting project manager for a consultant firm I used to work for and has served on some nonprofit boards with me as well. I didn't realize she was applying, so I'm really happy to see her uh apply. I'm comfortable on the Conservation Commission side of things. I might wanna spend a little more more time thinking about um the uh
Solid Waste guy is a good guy, a long-time family, uh, works for Yarmouth, North Yarmouth, either of those two.
Yeah.
He's a good dude, brings a lot of experience and it sounds like he's gonna be an alternate, so, but
If you, if you have info that, I I don't know the person, so if you have the feedback, I I just
I I I have a very good feeling. Plus, quite truthfully, we need some younger blood, yes.
Yes, I just say this is a consent agenda, so we're supposed to be having a conversation.
Oh, we're having a conversation on the motion to approve the consent agenda. Yeah, but it's
It's a consent agenda, so it's motion, yes, no, not a conversation.
All right.
Yeah, let's stop the conversation.
Sorry, question, questions on the motion is, does any, does everyone feel comfortable voting on the motion?
Motion? Yes.
Yes.
No.
No. Okay, um, so what, no, sorry, Jessica, your hand.
No, no, we're just getting ready, right?
Yeah, and so, did you wanna say, did you wanna say why you wanna hold off or?
Um, there seems to be a uh lot of talk amongst us and I don't think that we should, if we're talking about it, I don't think we should do it here, I guess.
So do you want to pull out the application appointment and just approve the um AP warrants then? Is that what you're asking, Jessica?
It is a consent agenda, which means you said, yes, you don't get to discuss it. And so there needs to be a vote yea or nay. 'Cause the motion's been settled.
Mm-hmm.
So I feel like it just
So we should
You should, well, but you you can ask questions and have a discussion on the motion, when the motion is the
No. I'm I'm not gonna argue with it, like that's not a like a consent agenda, there's lots to be discussed.
There's no questions or discussions, it's just
No, like a consent.
Okay, all right. Um, all in favor of the consent agenda as moved?
Wait, what are we voting on?
To vote, to approve the cons, to approve the consent agenda. Any opposition?
To vote, yes. Okay.
All right, so we will now go back to the discussions. I move, we approve and sign the AP warrants. Starting November eighteen, all right, we have a motion and then a second. Any discussion on the AP warrants? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposition? Okay. Um, that leaves us, the committee appointments, is there a motion to uh table these or does someone want to move these into executive session to discuss the committee appointments?
Yeah. Yes. Yes. It's eight forty-one. Uh, I have to go get my kid. Uh, I I wouldn't move the table these to to executive or executive session.
There's no pressure on them anyway, you said it's
Well, we need to go into executive session, right, 'cause there's
We have to go into executive session anyway, yeah.
You're gonna speak, uh well, and also
No one
Oh, we have it out there.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going into executive, but we have to go into executive session for a separate
I know that the Solid Waste Committee, I know that the Solid Waste Committee is looking forward to getting this person in in the discussion.
Okay, um, I, this is our only meeting this month, I would like to do it. Uh, if we have to move to executive session, so we have to make this a a a quick
Okay. Okay.
Quick, quick turnaround. And if we aren't, if we can figure out in the first ten minutes that it's not gonna be quick, we'll table it.
Okay.
That works for me. Um, do you remember what the, we'll 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 pick it up again later if we take no action.
I don't know what the reference would be, because they're not employees. So they had a four oh six five egg.
Would it be because it's municipal official?
We talked about these
Yes.
Well, I I know, I know, yeah, but I don't know what the citation would be on the top of my head.
Okay.
Well, we can set that aside for now. Um, and then we can figure that out. In the past, if we wanted to discuss a committee appointment, we need to discuss the the person. We didn't do that in an open setting, if the person, if someone felt the conversation
I'm I'm thinking that, 'cause I, you know, that I have to, like, I I don't think But usually the executive sessions are out for one person, I don't
Mm-hmm.
So you can discuss, consider the of the employment appointment, blah blah blah, of an individual, a group of public officials, appointees or employees, so it's four, five, six, eight allows, is a permitted deliberation during the executive session.
For employees.
For 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 any, for appointments.
Any appointment. Okay.
Okay. All righty.
But can I just throw out, I'm not gonna be able to stay for this entire discussion. Um, and if you're gonna have the these two discussions, I think you need to extend the meeting past nine o'clock.
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna go in seventeen minutes.
Well, that's, that was gonna be my next motion, because our executive session topic for tonight does have a a time sensitive matter that has to be responded to within thirty days and we won't have another meeting before that thirty-day timeline uh pops up, so we have to address that tonight. Um, so real quick, uh, upcoming meetings, we have enlisted here Conservation Commission on the nineteenth at six thirty here here at the Eureka Center, Ag Committee, that's December third at the Eureka Center. Solid Waste Committee, December eighth at the Eureka Center, Select Board Meeting, December ninth at the fire station, Planning Board Meeting, December tenth at the fire station. Upcoming discussions, following meetings, we're gonna be working on the bandstand. Um, and then a discussion in the next meeting on the ninth, the wage tables and retirement plan discussion will be, HR consultant will be occurring. Um, and so we do need an executive session, so I move the Select Board enters executive session pursuant to one MRS four oh five six F to review confidential, financial and personal records submitted in support of a poverty hardship or payment application pursuant to thirty-six MRS eight four one two in connection with the board's current consideration of the abatement application. The board will not take an action in the executive session, but we need to go in the executive session to discuss. Uh, just a motion. Do I have a second for the motion? Did you say?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, just wait, I may
I'll I'll wait till a second. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll I'll second.
Okay, so we're gonna move into executive session.
I I think you need to extend the meeting before you go into executive session, okay, 'cause I don't think it's appropriate to vote to a second meeting or an executive session.
Yeah, I don't think we can, that's good. Uh, I withdraw my motion and I'll move that we extend the meeting until nine thirty. Do I have a second also?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none? All right, now at eight forty-five or eight forty-six, I move that the Sub Board enters executive session pursuant to four oh five six F to review confidential, financial and personal records submitted in support of a poverty hardship abatement application pursuant to thirty-six MRS eight four one two in connection with the board's consideration of the abatement application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Seeing none? All right. And Jessica, we're just recording